All right, good morning, everybody at St. Trudy. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. And our first item of business is to approve the agenda.
Move to approve, second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard this morning? Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. At this time, we would like to recognize a $200 donation towards the sheriff's work detail from the Baker Downer Westminster Church. And we would like to thank you for that contribution to our work detail. Okay, we'll move into our 8:35 item, and that's the consideration of adoption of the final levy in 2018 budget. Brian and Lori, good morning.
Good morning. Well, good morning again, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. You have in your packet Resolution 201755, which is the resolution to approve the levy for 2018. And then you also have accompanying budget, and there will need to be action on both, first the levy and then the 2018 budget. So, unless there's questions, I'd ask for motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. I have a question on the Commissioner Mojo had raised a question regarding fees that we're going to look at in 2018. And as I go, went through the consent agenda today, there was also a lot of lease renewals. And I'm wondering what we've been doing in the past. I know we've, you know, a lot of times we do a three-year lease on some, with some of these organizations. But I'm wondering what we're doing in terms of inflationary adjustments for leases. Can you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can respond to that. What Georgia does on occasion is she does do a study of the local charges for rental, and she does work out some agreements with different organizations of increases on a regular basis. In some cases, the state has a set rate that they will pay, which is very competitive with what they have. And I think the highest rate is right now around three and a, thirteen and a quarter, or 1375. And she does, when she does a three-year lease, she does do an inflation with those lease agreements.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Thank you. And then we'll need also a motion on the budget too, correct?
Yep.
And that's the longer piece that you have that lays out the different funds and different things. So, we would need a motion on that as well.
All right. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, that went faster than we anticipated. I wonder, I see Peyton is here.
Oh, Nancy's here.
I guess we could take you folks early if you're ready, Nancy. Peyton, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we have a request and proposal from the city of Dilworth to acquire properties. Is there three of them, is that, or three, no, it's Three Adams Avenue and the Jason Lots, so there's two properties. Okay, Nancy?
We have a piece of property that went tax forfeit this year in the city of Dilworth. The city requested that it be withheld from the tax sound until they got their proposal in order. There is a lot next to this one that forfeited several years ago. It's too small to build on, so the only people we can offer to is an adjacent landowner. It was offered prior, and there's no interest in it, so.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. And thankfully, we have a little bit of interest in the properties here at this location, in particular, the Habitat for Humanity organization does. I've been working with them recently and seeing if they would have any interest. So, we did a drive-by of this property about three months ago, I guess, trying to get the goals in order for 2018. And they felt there was great interest in putting a home here in 2018. And the pictures probably that are being passed around right now probably don't do the property justice as far as the condition that it's been in. It's been vacant, actually, for about four years now, no services to it, not well-kept. The city's been out there, actually, mowing it for the past few years, and I think we even had a resolution this year to apply to the taxes. So, it's something that has been a constant maintenance issue. Commissioner Gross may be familiar with the property right there on the south side of the tracks, in the little idling portion. So, in speaking with the council, they felt it was a good move for us to move forward with maybe acquiring this property, turn it over to Habitat for Humanity, Spur and Symbro is getting some opportunity to prosper there in our community. Yeah, the lots are, they're pretty narrow, they're only 33 feet wide, and when you take all three of them together, you're going to have about 100-foot lot in width, about 144 foot in depth. So, it's actually a decent-sized lot to be in the city, and it's a desperate need of some, you know, rehab in that side of town. So, we felt like it'd be a worthwhile project. Let them open to answering any questions, pretty straightforward, not much to it, really.
Comments?
No, I think this is a good project. I mean, any improvement there would be helpful. So, I really applaud Dilworth for moving ahead on this, and maybe there's not available. A bigger motion to approve.
I'm second to motion.
Motion and a second. And this would meet all the blighted conditions and all that, and the city's used that for public good.
With the photographs and the background provided, in order to pass the resolution, the council would be finding that the property is blighted and that the city's interest in correcting the blight and transforming either into economic development or affordable housing is appropriate and would be the best way to go forward.
So, I'm, we'll make that part of your motion?
Well, that sounds good.
Your second. Is that okay?
That's the way I was going to say it.
That's exactly what you said.
Before she interrupted me.
For the record, I think that would be, include that as part of your motion. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. All right, good luck, Peyton.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I guess we see that, Peyton.
They're chugging all along here. I wonder if we could go into, that's to our committee reports now, then we're early in. Maybe Commissioner Haney, if you're ready, we'll start with you just.
Okay, on Thursday, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting along with Commissioner Mojo. And we considered a grant application for Palmer Amaranth. It's a $30,000 grant application from the state of Minnesota. And Palmer Amaranth is a noxious weed similar to pigweed that has been found in seed that was purchased to replant prairie that came from where? Where did it come from, Jenny, Iowa or Kansas or someplace? Anyway, it's a tiny seed that was introduced into Minnesota by accident. And there's, it's a really bad one as far as the spread and difficulty in eradicating it. And so, that was one of the main things. We heard about buffer issues as well. And then there was also a pay equity report, that was, the report was in compliance. And then Commissioner Mojo was there for the balance of the meeting. I had to go to another engagement at that time. And then on Friday, I attended the Early Childhood Initiative Training in Understanding ACEs. And ACEs are Adverse Childhood Experience. And they've got new criteria and training for caregivers and providers and stakeholders in dealing with ACEs, which are, they're determining now, don't just go away after you, after a child experiences them. They physically manifest themselves in the child's physical makeup and last for years and years. And that was a very sobering and enlightening meeting to attend. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Tuesday, we had the Highway Tracking Meeting. They already discussed the three tap grants planned for Morhead, with part of the Harvest Trail, always planning part of the Heartland Trail. Barnes was also applying for a path along County State 8 Highway Number Two. So, those are three tap grants that hopefully we can get some money for. We also discussed the Felton pit up there, there's a lot of rocks, people showing some interest in buying rocks. Wish I would've known that around 30, 40 years ago. Sold them a lot on rocks. Anyway, we were looking at making the rocks for sale, you know, coming up with an idea for prices and stuff like that. Wednesday, I had the Extension Committee, they're, the 4-H is coming up with a big challenge on water quality. Really a Northwest Minnesota challenge, and they're going to get involved in coming up with a 4-H project, come up with their own plan for improving water quality. They also talked about the wheat harvest in Minnesota, that 50% of the wheat plant, I mean, it's sort of a record wheat harvest this year, 50% of the wheat plant in Minnesota was developed at the university, so, further, they're happy for doing that, so. Okay, and then we, the Heartland Trail on Friday, again, we just discussed further what's being done on there, applying for, still applying for the grant, looking at, can't really do anything until they get back in session again in February. We're looking at sending out a letter notifying the people that are along the plant potential trail. I mean, there's no actual trail yet, but I mean, we got a potential plan there, and we plan on sending out a letter to the people who are along the trail there. That was it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wayland?
Let's see, I had Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting in Purim last week, and it's been, been a good year compared to other years there, and things look pretty bright for the future, so, that was about it for that meeting. And then we had a greater Fergomore Economic Development Corporation meeting last week, and of the full, we had an executive meeting first, and then we had a full board meeting after that. And the discussion at the executive meeting was about replacing Jim Garten, and I think we've got a plan in place for that. And then the regular board meeting, we had updates by all the staff members, and I think it looks like it was a pretty good year with the Economic Development Corporation and things, a lot of things going on for 2018. That was it for me.
Thank you. Last week, I had a meeting with Governor Dayton's office in regards to the governor's task force report. The finalization was scheduled to be Friday, the 15th, but because we were waiting on some technical engineering reports, that will hopefully be something that will be done by January 5th, I believe, is our deadline. So, the governors will each write their recommendation based on consensus, and then each member of the task force will write a piece as well in regards to specific concerns that one may have. For instance, our major concern with, with one tieback in Minnesota is how it was changed, was the two east-west Buffalo Red ditches that are in the south piece, so we'll want to have those analyzed and make sure the drainage isn't interrupted there. I attended a thank you event for Dr. Kovash, the Morhead superintendent that is retiring on Tuesday. There was great representation from most of the communities in Clay County and school districts, as well as our state reps, so it was good to see the support for her long career in the Morhead School District. I also attended the Extension Meeting on Wednesday, and Frank gave a good report in regards to what's going on there. There is a new master gardener that will be graduating for Clay County, so that will bring that number up to three. And was encouraging, they've done such a great job with the grounds. This summer, it looked fantastic, and they're excited to work with the new buildings as well, to make sure there's a plan for those areas. I also attended the Soil and Water Meeting on Thursday. One thing that's of interest is in regards to public waters and buffers. The DNR has remapped some of the areas in Clay County that have been a concern, and we've been talking about this for quite a few months, that they necessarily didn't qualify for being classified as public waters or on the buffer. There is a piece of land by Felton that was removed from the public waters map, that, I think you've talked to that landowner. And then up in Yulin, Section 11 and 12, there was a piece that was removed from the buffer map. So, that is something that we were hopeful would get changed, we were doubtful that it would, so it was good to see that it was. Also, in regards to that gravel, that grant that they were talking about and noxious weeds, there is to talk about if they should go ahead and kind of include gravel pit certification in that. And I think the thought was that if our gravel pits have weeds in them, and then they're being used for gravel roads, and they're spreading weed seed there, and it was my thought that there are other areas that are contributing into it more than potential gravel pits. So, I said to go ahead with the grant, and then we'll kind of see. For now, they're not doing anything with the gravel pits. But yesterday, I attended a Lakeland Mental Health Meeting in Fergus Falls. We had Audit Committee recommendation to continue a CLA for the audit. They've done a really great job the past few years in considerably less money, so that's always a good thing. We had an executive committee where we did a six-month review of the executive director, and those all came back quite favorably. So, the recommendation to the full board was to continue Donna Baker's contract for the next year. The conversations that we've had with different county social services departments is that the representation and teamwork is better than ever, and I think we can contest to that for how much they helped with our behavioral mental health unit and the grants that we received through them. So, I think that concludes my reports.
All right, thank you. Okay, myself, I had a Highway Tracking Committee Meeting on Tuesday, and Commissioner Gross, I think, gave a very good recap of that. I did note that he was very interested in the fact that there was people interested in rocks nowadays compared to many years ago, when people were out picking rocks and didn't know what to do with them.
I would put aside a pick-your-own, Neil.
All right, and then I also then had the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting, and that one Commissioner Wayland talked about. I just want to add that there was a request from, oh, by the way, the financial condition of that thing has changed now to, this year, we're looking at revenues over expenditures somewhere in the area of 3/4 of a million dollars to a million dollars compared to, if you remember not too long ago, we were, had to come back and ask counties to pay for a deficit, so it's really turned around. Now, part of that, about $400,000 of that is the award and the winning on the lawsuit. But even with those dollars in mind, we're still probably anywhere from, you know, $500,000 on up in revenues over expenditures, so we've really turned that around. And then also, Becker County had asked the municipal authority to support their request for a grant through the bonding bill for about a $1.5 million building that they're going to, they're looking at using to bring in large material like mattresses and things like that, that can be then torn apart and recycled. It's a good thing, you know, I talked to them that, you know, here in Clay County and Morhead specifically, our solid waste group has worked with the campuses in Morhead and once a year, I think we go through, and I think, if I remember, recall correctly, they've collected over 100 mattresses at one time on these campuses. And of course, those are, are not good for our landfill, and so, we put them on trucks and shipped them off. So, this would be a good alternative. So, we did support that, and then at the same time, then I reminded them that Clay County has also got a bonding request in for the transfer station. And, you know, we've, we've had that request in now for a couple of years. And so, they also then voted to support Clay County's efforts in, in getting our bonding for that transfer station. So, I had talked to Kirk, and he drafted a letter then that would, would be signed by Doug Heaps from Otterville County as the board chair of Municipal Prairie Lakes in support of our project. Then on Thursday morning, we, you know, I also attended then the Greater Fergomore Economic Development Corporation's annual meeting. We established the 2018 budget. Part of the, part of that budget is they're going to, they have, they actually have anticipated expenditures over revenues, but they've determined what they've thought was going to be an adequate reserve. In the case of them, it's a nine-month, nine months' worth of their annual budget, if they have that in reserve. And so, they've decided to use part of the reserves to further expand some opportunities to gain additional people coming in and adding to our, being able to add to our workforce. So, those were all good things. And that is all that I had. And Brian, I think if it's okay with you, we'll, we have Dave here now, so we'll, we'll get your report at the end. Dave, if you're ready, come on up and we'll. Good morning, we have several items this morning.
I don't think I've ever had 10 items before, so.
Well, yeah.
I was wondering if you just haven't submitted anything for two months.
We've been slacking for a while, letting it build up. Hope I keep it all straight there, there's so much information there.
All right, so item number one is the approval of a quote to purchase a copy of the shares.
Yeah, about every five years or so, we, I do need to work with Lori, probably to put it in Internal Service Fund, we don't do that right now. It is kind of a one-time increase to our budget, but we did budget for this in 2018 for a copy replacement. And as you can see, I think the prices were pretty good, they're pretty competitive. All three of the companies that we worked with were extremely excited and interested to work with us. We currently have Toshiba, we had Liberty before then, and I think their, their product looks like it should work just fine for us. I'd like to move forward with Liberty machine, as per abstract I submitted.
All right.
I just had a question on budgeting. So, you say that it's been put into the budget. My question is, what, what got moved around to make $6,500 to be rolled?
Would be an increase. Would be an increase?
Okay, any other questions? Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to item number two, and that's the to sell rip rap from the county's Felton gravel pit. And we, Frank had given a little report based on our Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and so, we've got a little bit of background, but if you want to.
Sure, so every year that we mine gravel out there, as you're digging into the ground, you end up with rocks that are too large to process into gravel. And right now, we just kind of pile those up, and we've had several years of, of large rock, and it's anywhere from greater than 12 inches up to two feet, and 36 inches even. And I think there is a market for this, but more than anything, we kind of need just to get some of these rocks out of the way. So, what we'd like to do is take quotes on rock, and we tried to do it so that we, because we really don't want to spend any money on this. It isn't like we're selling something with a lot of value that we can advertise and spend money on. So, we're going to advertise just on our county website, I would make phone calls, and I have had a guy that's interested in doing, I think it's, he thinks he's going to get diversion work, so he's been calling us, trying to get a hold of our rocks for a long time, I never really got back to him. But if, now if he wants rocks, I'd love to sell them.
Mattresses, can you use any mattresses?
Mattresses and new TVs.
We can advertise.
So, I guess we'd like to, you know, another thing is, when we did this before, Kevin, if you remember, probably over 10 years ago, we had another huge rock pile that was in the way, and we had a guy sitting out there counting trucks, and I really don't want to have to do that if I don't have to either. So, Brian, our maintenance fellow, went out, and he kind of calculated out certain, we call them zones, or just piles essentially, and he had estimated quantities on there. And we'd like to take bids kind of on an individual basis as each, so there'd be no weighing, no measuring, and really no people, the staff out there as well. So, we kind of put together a little, a little quote sheet, we'd like to take bids or quotes, I guess, by the end of the year. And then the other thing we talked about is, well, how long do we give them to get, to get rid of it? You know, do you want to have it out of there sooner than later? And I don't think it's really all that crucial to us, that it gets out of there like by June or by July 1st. So, we kind of give them the entire construction season of 2018 to get these things out of there. Essentially, if we make a little money off this, I think it's a good thing, but we don't want to spend any money, and we kind of need to get the rocks out of our way. They're not causing a lot of problems right now, but it'd be good to, you know, we've been kind of continually cleaning up our pit. There was a bunch of culverts and things that we cleaned up over the past few years. There's been some tree work and brushing work that we've kind of got out of the way, and we're just kind of like doing gravel pit maintenance, I guess, more than anything.
I have a question. You said you don't want this to cost us any money. Are you hoping that whoever gets the bid would load everything themselves?
Yes, and that, that's kind of written in here too, yep. Yeah, we're not going to have a loader out there, almost essentially, you know, Brian would have to go out there and every so often and periodically, you know, make sure that they're not doing anything they shouldn't be doing or anything, but yeah, we're not going to have any staff, any equipment or anything up there. Just basically, they make the pile go away.
Isn't that kind of a liability to have other people's heavy equipment on our property, though?
Yeah, I guess it happens now, when we crush gravel, though. They, they bring in all their equipment, they crush gravel, and then they leave.
But that's in a contract, you have a crusher come in.
Another thing is, they got to be licensed contractors and provide a certificate of insurance. That's all in our quote package.
My other question is, I, you know, if it's in the way, I question why giving them the whole year to get rid of it?
I think we, it'd be a little easier for them, we're, I guess, we're trying to get as much interest as we can. When I say it's in the way, it's not causing trouble right now. When I say it's in the way, it's not causing trouble right now. It is, you know, we want, we want to get them out of our way, maybe that's the best way to put it, it's not in our way, but we need to get it out of the way. You know, it sounds kind of crazy, but, like I said, right now it's not causing a lot of problems, we can work around it, but why not have it cleaned up and get rid of it?
Dave, one of the questions that was brought up in highway tracking regarding this, it was brought up by Brian, Brian Berg, and that was how we deal with this in an open way. So is, is having it our only source, being the county website, does that meet the criteria for public?
It does.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be sure that we wouldn't have somebody coming back and say, you know, I didn't, I wasn't fairly notified compared to a competitor or something.
Sure.
All right.
I got a question. The zones are rated in terms of CY, I'm assuming that's cubic yards?
Yep.
Two hundred and fifty cubic yards on the top one there. How many cubic yards would go into a truck?
Maybe somewhere between ten and fifteen, somewhere in there.
Okay, so the bottom one with seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five cubic yards, that's a big one.
Lot of trucks, yeah.
Okay, it's probably not gonna go in one year.
Oh, yeah, they'll get rid of that.
If you get some, yeah, if you get a guide, I'd do it.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
If you've got the trucks, yeah.
Okay.
If they run out, let me know.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Item number three, is the approval to advertise for Glynn Urban Reconstruction.
Yeah, Eric, if you want to talk about these two, this is a couple of our construction projects we have coming up this summer.
So this first one is in Glynnin, it's been an ongoing project for the whole year. We're gonna reconstruct a mile right through Glynnin there on County Road nineteen. Throughout the last year, we've been working closely with the city on the design. The plans are submitted to state aid right now, and we're just waiting for their approval, and then we'll set a letting date. So I guess today we're just looking for permission to advertise once the plans are approved. We're hoping to have a letting date in February.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, we'll move on to item number four, and that's the approval to advertise for Cassad Nine paving project, and that's also known as the, previously as County Road Ninety-five.
Yep.
All right.
Yep, and this is just the five-mile paving project north of Dilworth there. We graded it in two thousand sixteen, and we're currently designing the plans, and we'd like to get approval to advertise with a bid opening date of February thirteenth.
So kind of our plan is, we feel like since we're cooperative with Glynnin, it's probably our most important project, there's federal aid on it as well. What we'd like to do is let this project one week later, that way we can see how much the bids come in and see where our, our state aid balances and things will be, and then hopefully one week later, we would open bids on County Road Nine paving, and they're still quite early, you know, they're somewhere in the first, second week in February, so we're hoping to get on top, a little ahead of schedule.
That was, that was my question, it was gonna be, how does that compare with other, what other entities usually try to do in terms of, usually if you get them in early, you have a chance of getting some fairly good bids.
Yeah, I'd say we'd be anywhere from one to two months ahead of schedule.
Very good.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Yeah.
We have a second, further discussion?
Well, I think it's been part of our five-year plan for several years, and I think it'd be nice to get that project completed and move on, so it's a good idea.
All right, thank you. Yes, I agree with that statement. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, we'll move into item number five, and that's the execute new MinDOT PCP agreement.
Every so often, they make us update these, these agreements with MinDOT. So this is the agreement that allows counties to work with MinDOT on delivering of federal aid dollars and federal aid projects. The last time we did it, I think, was two thousand twelve, and almost is the exact same agreement. And Jenny, did you have a chance to take a look at that?
I did, I took a look at it, and there's nothing unusual, it's a lot of updated federal requirements that really apply to the state if they're going to be our agent to accept the federal funding, so it all looks very status quo, but just brings the state into compliance.
So I think there's a resolution and an agreement, but I guess we need to get executed and turn around. Did you have the resolution here, is it?
It's on the back of the DOT letter.
So this would be resolution two thousand seventeen dash fifty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve, resolution two thousand seventeen dash fifty-three.
All right, second, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, and then we all, what else did we need on that plan?
There was the actual agreement itself.
The service, okay, and that's contract number one oh three zero zero one four with MinDOT.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
All right, second, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried, all right. Dave, we'll move into item number six, and that's the approved joint powers agreement and resolution for the administration of federal HCP safety grant.
Eric has been working with, what we did on these type of projects, we, within District Four, there's twelve counties, so some of the southern counties worked together on a HCP project, and some of the northern counties did. So we have, you know, Otter Tail County has taken the lead before Grant County, Douglas County, and this is your Clay County, is kind of taking the lead on this. So Eric's been working with these other counties, and I'll let him kind of explain what he's got here.
Yeah, so basically, this agreement just explains, you know, the roles and responsibilities for each county. We're working with Clay, Becker, Menomen, and Wilton County on this project, and it is a federally funded project to light up various intersections. And yeah, we're seeking approval of the agreement and a resolution, and basically Clay County will be, you know, the lead agency on this, so we'll be advertising for bids, generating payments and so forth, and then we'll invoice the other counties back at the end.
For, for our staff time administering it. Did you pass out a, some maps of the locations?
Yeah, so this little handout here with the yellow dots, these are the intersections we're gonna light up in just Clay County. So, and they will be paid for with ninety percent federal funds.
Do you have a little bit of state aid funding covering that last ten percent?
Yep.
I see that you do have, excuse me, I see that you do have twenty-six and State Highway Nine on there.
Yep.
So when you say light up, that's, that's just with street lighting type?
Yep, just your red lights, yeah. And there'll be all LED lights now.
Kind of like what we did up at seventy-five and twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's a really good safety thing, I think.
Is there much maintenance involved in those signs?
No, especially now with the LEDs, almost no maintenance.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, and we do have, there is a, an annual cost that we pay for the electricity, right?
Yeah.
That comes through, is it Red River Co-op or whoever the provider is?
Usually it's either XL or Red River, those are the two that we get bills for.
Okay, and those, are those, those are incorporated into your annual maintenance budget, is that how that?
Yeah, we've got a lighting budget too, and, you know, and it's been steadily ratcheting up because we've added a couple here, a couple there each year. We had some down on fifty-two, I think, south between Saban and Morehead, we got a couple on fifty-two there. We lit twenty, twenty-six and trunk, or County Road Eleven a few years back, so we've been, we've been adding a little bit. The roundabout, that was a big one, we got several lights down there. At one time, that was supposed to be all county costs on that, but I kind of negotiated and worked our magic, so MinDOT pays for the lights on their, on their piece, and we pay it for the lights on our piece, so would have been about another, almost a dozen more lights that we'd have paid for power on.
Well, the small amount per year that each intersection we pay is well worth the money when it comes to how the extra safety that it adds to those intersections.
Especially this time of year, when it's gonna get foggy at night, if it's slippery, it sure is nice.
It's dark at four.
Yeah.
It's nice to have that.
Okay, so this would be the approval of the safety agreement, and this would be project number zero eighty-eight dash seventy dash zero fifty-four. This is the board's wishes.
Move approval.
We already...
Oh, we already had, we, I'm sorry, we already had a motion and a second, I'm sorry, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, so then we will move into...
The resolution?
We've got a resolution. It's two thousand seventeen dash forty-eight. I'll make a motion to approve, resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-eight.
Okay, very good. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Okay, our next item is the approval of a quitclaim deed correcting a warranty deed along Cassad Nineteen.
I didn't realize this was a problem, but back in two thousand twelve, we were in the process of acquiring some right-of-way just north of the state mart in Glynnin, and we inadvertently wrote the description wrong and recorded it, so we have a warranty deed with the wrong description, so that was done in, I think, right around April or May. In September, we did a corrective deed, so we got a second deed for the correct description, but we still had the old one out there. We didn't realize that that needed to be fixed, so this farm family has had some title opinion work done there, they're retiring and spreading the land around, and I was contacted by Vogal Law Firm that we need step three of this piece, which is basically quit claiming back the incorrect parcel that's wrong. So essentially, that's what we need, I did run this by Jenny, and she said to bring it to the board, have the board sign the quitclaim deed, basically quit claiming back the incorrect description. So it's, it's the east forty-five feet of the west fifty feet or something, so essentially we're just correcting up the wrong deed, and we'll record that and then let Vogal Law Firm know that we fixed it.
Motion to approve. Will we have a motion to approve, quitclaim deed? Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, approval of campus, county campus parking lot project final.
Can you believe it, we're bringing a final in for all that parking lot work. Eric and his staff did a, I think they did a nice job, it was, it was a lot of work. Obviously, anytime you do something close to a million dollars or a little over a million dollars, it is a lot of work, but I'll have Eric run through that a little bit and give you specifics on it.
Yep, so of course, this project is the paving out in front of the courthouse, and then the northwest parking lot we did. I guess throughout construction, you know, we did encounter a few things, we tried to update the board as we went along, but really the two major issues we were in into were out in front of that courthouse, you know, we tore out the old lot, we found a whole bunch of, you know, unsuitable stuff below it, so we had to dig that out and replace it. And then also in front of the family service center, if you remember, you know, we were gonna do a mill and overlay, but when we milled the pavement off, it was breaking up, and we were concerned that, you know, it wasn't gonna last, so we, we opted to do a full-depth repair there, which, which I think was a good choice, it should give us a, a long life on the parking lot. And then also too, everything else on the project, there were a lot of little miscellaneous items like lighting and landscaping and stuff, and we tried to save a little money here and there on other stuff, and we actually had pretty significant savings on landscaping to try to help, so. But ultimately, the final amount to be approved is one million fifty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Any questions? I'm gonna approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, we'll move into item number nine, and that's the approval of a sponsoring resolution and maintenance resolution for Holly TAP grant.
So these are two documents, is that correct, Eric? Items nine and ten are pretty much the exact same situation, we are a sponsoring agency for TAP resolution and sponsoring part for the city of Holly. Does everybody have a map where you can see what they're, where they're looking at? Essentially, that's that road on the north side of town that they've been trying to work with us on, doing some work there, it's an extension or a portion of the Heartland Trail. And I guess I feel it would be very little impact and almost no cost to the county to administer this and, and help the city with this, so I guess I, I think it's a good deal that we're able to kind of work with these smaller cities on projects like this.
And this, we had talked about this several times at our tracking meeting, and I know we had talked about cost shares, and I know we talked about that, they wanted that, I'm assuming that's this east-west one that...
So this grant, TAP application, there's multiple phases the city's showing here, but really the one they're applying for now is this yellow phase.
Right.
So they're gonna, currently there's parallel parking on both sides of the street, and they're proposing to eliminate parallel parking on the west side of the street and replace it with a shared-use path.
Yeah, but, but, so this, this is all county roadway?
Correct, county Cassad there.
But this piece here is not.
Correct.
But yet, we're still involved with that as part of the project.
Correct, and really the reason...
And when it came to, I, I know we had discussions about the cost share on this piece, and did, we came to a resolution as to how we, I don't, I don't recall what it is right offhand, but, but whatever we talked about and agreed upon in our highway tracking meeting, that's been what you're doing in terms of the cost share agreement.
At this point, we're not cost sharing on any of this project, is that correct?
Yeah, especially not the piece here.
Yeah, we're cost sharing on...
Which is sponsored.
Yeah, but we're cost sharing on this piece, aren't we?
That was an idea without the TAP, you know, if we were gonna do a recon, they were, they were asking or requesting us to do a reconstruct on this one in addition to those miles north out of town, all the way up to twenty-six.
Right.
So if we get a TAP grant on that, that'll essentially cover both entities' cost sharing, so to speak, so.
Okay.
They're, they're seeking out federal aid funds to do their work that they wanted.
All right, well, we had talked about this without a TAP grant.
Correct, yep.
That's, I guess that's where, where my recollection was.
Sure.
All right, so if the TAP grant is successful, then...
It helps both of us out as far as funding on that section.
Because we had looked at putting money in our five-year plan into a cost share in this.
Yeah, I think Eric put together some numbers on that, and I think it was more of a, was it a sixty, forty split, I think, was kind of how things turned out based on parking dimensions and conditions of the roadway and costs, you know. We don't feel today that that road needs to have a complete reconstruct, it's not that bad, so we would pay for a mill and overlays to fix it.
That's where the discussion was.
Yeah, and, and, you know, they do need to do, they have underground utilities under that that need to be removed, so we agreed, I think, to a forty percent cost split on there on the county share based on several different criteria.
That's if the TAP grant isn't successful.
Correct.
That, okay, that's, all right, very good. I'm moving to approve. And then a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. So this was, your, your motion then was resolution two thousand seventeen dash forty-nine? Okay, all right, all right. And then we also have, we also then need to have the, the maintenance portion of it, right? And that, and that's resolution two thousand seventeen dash fifty? We need to have that as well?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, and I'm assuming we're gonna deal with the same thing with Barnesville now.
Yeah.
All right, so that's your item number ten, and this would be resolution two thousand seventeen dash fifty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve, resolution two thousand seventeen dash fifty-one.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried, and we also need the maintenance, that'd be two thousand seventeen dash fifty-two.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Dave, anything else for me this morning that shouldn't be, you've had ten items?
I think it was more than ten.
True, it's probably more like fourteen or sixteen.
All right, well, thank you, appreciate it.
I know all our guys are kind of getting ramped up, supposedly, you know, it from one to eight inches of snow Wednesday night, so I hope Brian's kind of got them on, sent an email this morning, so.
Very good, very good, thank you.
Thanks for getting on and taking care of that ice from yesterday, I think that was to get out there and get rid of it before we get three inches of snow on top of it, so.
Well, I heard Brian make the comment that we've already put, was it four hundred, four hundred ton of salt sand down where we haven't, you know, it's been so nice the last two or three winters, we haven't put anywhere near that down the entire winter, but...
Ice is scary, so.
We gotta do it, and they're actually, they're a little hesitant to go to, to put, like, even said they put pure salt down on those areas down there just because they really wanted to burn it off.
Yeah.
You know, you gotta do that, you know, if you get a situation that's dangerous out there, you gotta do what you can when you have a little sunlight.
Very good.
Good work on the parking lots.
Yeah, yeah, way to go.
They seem to be getting used to it.
Yeah.
All right, Stephen? And you got four things.
All right. Vernon, hopefully you guys still have some motion approvals left.
Only four, man. Don't sound be doing much over there.
There's a couple of pretty important ones in here, for sure. So we'll start off, you're looking for renewal contract with Lakeland Mental Health, and maybe just a brief discussion.
Sure. We, we are partnership, have a partnership with Lakeland Mental Health for our thirty-day evaluation program. Through our contract, we have a licensed psychologist, a clinical nurse, nurse specialist, and assessment coordinator who work with our, our thirty-day eval program. And we, they're, the eval program's a pretty critical part of our non-severe program, and with a lot of the mental health issues that we're having is becoming even more important. They, they utilized about thirty evals a year, which, which this year, again, they were at their, their capacity. And so Lakeland has requested a two percent raise, or two percent increase, I guess, in the contract. This is the first, first contract increase they've asked for in three years, and so we do have that two percent budgeted for eighteen.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. We'll move into our next item, and this is the approval of the new cooperative service agreement resolution. And this is the agreement that will take effect in basically when our remodel would be complete.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you're well aware, last, last Monday, we held an open meeting at CCI here in Moorhead to, to discuss the expansion and remodel of the juvenile center. Again, I'd like to thank this board for being well represented there. I think that provided an excellent standard, I think, for our members to see that, the support from our county. We, we had anticipated a pretty busy meeting. We didn't, I don't think, anticipate the turnout that we received. We had every county represented, 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 present, how about that? And except for Travis County. Travis County had actually, had been down there the Monday previous to that, and they had agreed to the contract at that time. And so I do, if I could take a second, just to thank Kevin for, for Commissioner Campbell for leading that meeting, I think that, that helped run very smoothly. I think that in doing so, we were able to answer, answer their questions that they had and, and flow smoothly. And also Jenny for, for working on the contracts and resolutions and with our member counties. And again, Darren and, and my staff for having the refreshments areas set up. But having said that, part of our presentation, we, we talked a little bit about where, where we've been. I think that in the presentation, we showed that this wasn't just a blip, that we have a lot of information and statistics that show that our needs for the program are, are, have increased over the years. We talked a little bit about where we are now, and again, we talked about why we're here today, our, our resolution and our cooperative service agreement. All of our member counties were provided the contract this fall. They all had look-back periods where they were able to provide feedback to our advisory board, and Jenny made those adjustments. We did have a, one request during the meeting, and that adjustment was made to, to the cooperative service agreement in regards to transportation. The major changes that we're, we're seeing in our cooperative service agreement are very similar, it's actually very similar verbiage-wise to what we had before, but there's pretty, some fairly significant changes. Currently, our member counties have the opportunity every August to determine if they want to move forward in continuing to be a partner. Under this agreement, our counties would be agreeing to a twenty-year contract, to which they're, they do have an opportunity to opt out of, but there would be a financial, a financial piece that would go with that. And so our member counties were, were very supportive of that, if, which is very, very happy. If you recall, a number of years ago, we tried to get counties to go to a three-year contract, and, and it wasn't something they were very interested in. So a twenty-year contract certainly is, I think, a wonderful protection for the facility and for Clay County. Also, what we're looking at is the bed purchase plan, which has been in place since October of 2009, and it served, I think, the facility very well. We're looking at revamping that. Commissioner Wayland came up with the plan of looking at a two-year look-back this fall. And so we'll, we'll be looking back from a July one range of, say, sixteen to, to June thirtieth of, of 2018. And during that time, our member counties will then take, our total number of member county days, and each member county will divide that, divide that by, by the number of days they've utilized, and that will give them a percentage. So it'll be an active, I guess, a more realistic, real-time piece, and a percentage will be then provided to that, and that will become their percentage of the, the next operating budget minus the, the additional revenues. And so I think that from, from the facility standpoint, again, it'll make my job a great deal easier. We have counties that are utilizing above and below as far as their usage, and when they're above, and we're asking them to, to pay more, a lot of times, there's a little bit of, of kickback, and this will, this will provide them, I guess, a guaranteed expectation of payment that's really not negotiable. And so there is a minimum from our, from our smaller counties of a one percent, one percent of our operating budget minus the revenues that they'll be required to do. And so those are kind of the highlights. We're also planning to have one additional quarterly advisory board meetings rather than just three, three per year.
Thank you, Stephen. That's a good recap, but I, I wanted to point out, you mentioned the, the two-year look-back, and I know there was a couple of questions from members about should that have been a, a longer look-back period? And I, I think we chose that at the beginning to have a, a good accurate starting point. One, one thing that I, I failed to mention that day, though, that all of our county boards through that advisory council would still have the ability at some point in time through an amendment to change that look-back period to something different.
That's correct.
So, you know, so just so people are aware, and it, and it might be sometime in the interest of Clay County to also maybe understand that maybe a two, two, two-year look-back might be a significant financial adjustment to any one county.
Correct.
And so there might be, you know, somebody could make a case. But that's up to the board, that's, that's part of why they're, they're going to have some say on how this thing's run. That's what I'm trying to say.
We're, we're on our Fifth Amendment from, from 1996, and so we certainly have that opportunity for the, for our counties to, to make those requests.
Yeah. The good news is we don't have to go back and ask for annual contract renewals.
That would be wonderful, yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the resolution, and great work, Steve and Jenny and Brian on this. It was a big project, so...
So this is 2017-54?
Yes, Mr. Chair. That, that's what I handed out. There was a slight, forty-eight was in place to be packed under this. I just made that adjustment right now.
Okay, and so we have a second?
Mr. Chair, can I make one comment?
Can we get, can we get a second before?
Oh, chief, I see.
All right, okay, no, go ahead.
I, I would just request, if I may, that the motion be made contingent on the other member counties accepting and approving this contract. I don't feel like Clay County should accept their responsibility until we know that all the other member counties are in place.
Very good, and I think that's what you said, isn't it?
That's exactly what I meant.
And that meets with your second? All right, very good.
And, Mr. Chair, before you, you wrote on it, I, I just received a, a response back from Cass County, and they are in good, in agreement, full agreement. They said they've had extensive discussion on the agreement. They are having two ordinances passed that will though take some time, so I'm glad Jenny invoked that, that language. And they're, they'll have to have two readings of that ordinance, the first one in January, and then they won't approve that until the second reading in February, but he has assured me that everything is good to go, so...
Very good. All right, so any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. All right, now your vacancies.
I, we, two vacancies or two, two requests before the board. The first one is vacancies due to resignation. We had employee that, that resigned here this month, and based on salary calculations, this budget, this position is budgeted in eighteen, and salary calculations, we would see a significant savings from the position to a new hire of roughly twenty-one thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion. Second? And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, your...
The second request that I have in hiring a full-time position deals with our eighteen budget. We've converted some of our roster hours into, into this position. We've taken this position through advisory board and then through our, it's included in our 2018 budget, and so we would be requesting to, to hire and then, and backfill any of these positions if they were hired from within.
Motion to approve. Okay, motion? Second? And just a comment here, too, when we're looking at these positions for the regional juvenile center, very similar to our correctional facility, your, our jail staff, these are, these are positions that are basically fall under requirements of DOC, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct, and, and will be, and any expansion would be utilized in those positions.
So on the expansion portion...
Our hope is that as we do this, we're, we're, we're ticking off some of those, those staff that we'll leave moving forward, yes. And so I, I do hope at some point, if, from, from the board's standpoint, that if all the, the contracts come through and we do move forward, that, had some conversations with Julie and, and Justin, if there'd be some sort of transition plan that we can start working forward with, because we're pretty busy. And I think that from that standpoint, it's been, it's a challenge to, certainly, we're not the size of the jail, and we wouldn't be needing that many staff, but what we would be looking for is with the standpoint of the remodel makes the things a little bit, little bit more challenging as far as that process, and so I would be looking for hopefully some support after, after the new year, so...
Yeah, I, I, I think that's really good, because if that just goes forward, there's going to be a component to, there's going to be some changes, you know, and there's going to be some temporary setback issues, you know. So it'd be good, and I, you know, I would, I would highly suggest or recommend that you find somebody who can maybe even sit in and listen to that transition team once in a while when they have their meetings to get a, a feel for what it is they're doing.
Yes.
It won't be to the scale...
Right.
You know, for your facility, but...
Correct.
Very good. All right, well, we do have a motion in a second on this. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Stephen. Great work on your resolution.
Thank you.
All right, so we're back to our committee reports, and we have the one left, and that's our administrator's report. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning again. My first item is just to, to thank Colleen for her excellent work on this package that she put together for this board meeting. She, we won't go into the details, but she was preoccupied. She had to take a couple days of vacation, fly down to Texas, and I know she was preoccupied in getting this together, but yet did just a terrific job and put a lot of work into it, so thank you very much. The second item I have is, I received a letter from the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails, and remember last year, it was recommended to join a membership, and the membership is four hundred dollars? And I received the letter for renewal, and what they are asking for is that, they said that they had done a lot of legislative work, and they would like some consideration by the different boards to help pay for that legislative work, and they're suggesting that it be double your fee. So it was four hundred dollar membership, and, and, and I didn't dare make that commitment without going through you folks first, so you can either, I, I really suppose there should be a motion if you're going to make that extra payment on it, or whatever you wanted to do. And then while you're thinking about that, we do need to list a primary contact, and I know Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Gross are both on Parks and Trails, and I know it was Commissioner Wayland last year that made the motion to support the membership in this. So I guess I, and I, I don't know who wants to step forward and be the primary contact for these, this, so I thought I'd ask that at the same time.
You can put me down as the primary contact, that's fine.
Okay.
I don't, too much Frank wants. So, so and, and this additional four hundred dollars is, is something they're going to ask for every year, or, cause it's hard to tell, but I, you know, I mean, you assume part of your membership fee goes to pay for, you know, them doing that work, so...
Yeah, I just stated in the letter that they had done a lot of legislative work last year, and I think they did. I think there were some funds gained for parks, and, you know, I'm not encouraging one way or the other, but...
Well, I'll make the motion for the additional four hundred dollars for the one time thing, so...
I guess as we're looking at them trying to help us out with that Heartland Trail and stuff like that, show our support for that, I mean, we're looking at probably getting two or three hundred thousand dollars for that, so four hundred dollars may be well, well spent money there, so...
I'd take it that's a second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
That's a long second. It was a long second.
That's true.
I thought Jenny would help me out on this one, but she didn't step in.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Thank you very much.
All right.
And just a point of information, I'm sure you probably received the announcement on this, but Paul Kravenoff was selected as the outstanding supervisor, water resource supervisor by their state organization. Just thought I would mention that.
Say it again?
Paul Kravenoff was selected as the supervisor of the year by the Water Resource Board Bowser. And Highway Tracking's already been talked about and discussed way, way in depth. One of the meetings I had was with HR again, and our, our labor attorney. Looks like we'll be going to mediation with one of the groups, so we hope to have a quick resolution on that, so that's being scheduled in. Jenny and, and Tim and I had a meeting, referenced the Baker issue, and, and we've been communicating a little with Commissioner Mojo on that. She's well aware of the situation down there, and I think we have a favorable path forward to establish some parameters there, but they can get kind of messy sometimes in this one as being there. Yesterday, Kirk and I had a meeting with the city of Moorhead officials in regards to the, the managed city manager and their solid waste and street maintenance person. Steve referenced the MOU with the upcoming expansion or the, the transfer station and kind of putting together a plan of action going forward and, and where we're at in regards to, to the legislation meeting that you've requested and things along those lines. So I think we've got a pretty good plan going forward with that. And I think that's about it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, the, the MOU in regards to what? Is that how, you're talking about the transfer station?
Yes, yes, mm-hmm. Well, yeah, you know, the city owns property there, and, and who's going to, just a discussion of who's going to be paying what, and then a time schedule for a meeting with the four representatives, two from the city, two from the county, and then talking about the legislators meeting and so...
Very good. All right, thank you. Colleen, you have anything?
No, thank you.
All right, well, I guess on behalf of our board, we'd like to wish all of our employees and all of our citizens a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and we will meet after Christmas.
Yeah, twenty-sixth.
And we will be adjourned.